I move to open the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, polling the members, Vicki.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Who else will we? Oh, Robert.
Yes.
And Darlene. Yeah.
Bill Cattigan votes.
Did you get Darlene or did I miss it?
I don't see Darlene.
She's here.
Oh, there she is. Darlene.
Yay.
Yes.
Darlene. You're a yes and I'm a yes too, so the motion carries and meeting is open.
Thank you.
So we got two minutes before we can read the notice then. What, um, is there anything else that we need to talk about Beth?
We've got minutes if you want to approve them.
Which, uh, which minutes are we talking here?
Uh, from the last meeting, uh, what do we look, oh, was it October?
Twenty-third.
Yeah, the twenty-third of October.
When we, we continued. We continued the hearing.
Yeah, so they're very brief. It's a brief like hello, goodbye, but you also appointed Robert, so that's in there.
What folder are those under?
It's in the main folder.
Main folder.
So if you just open up the main folder, it's, um, so if you open up the member packet.
Ten twenty-three?
Yes, there you go, draft minutes.
Got it.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out where's the link to the folder?
I'll send it again.
Um, the email she sent yesterday, I think. Did you get, get her emails, Bill?
I've got an email, uh, November fourth.
I'll send it again. Yeah, no problem.
And it gives you the Zoom link, but I don't see the, um.
Yeah, that's gonna have to send a few. Alright.
Uh, I found it.
Okay.
Don't bother. Thanks.
Okay.
Alright, so. Uh, draft minutes, okay.
I did a review from my perspective. I didn't see any changes.
Yeah, no, it looks fine. Okay, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I, I move that we approve the minutes for October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Great. There's a second?
Second.
Okay, polling members, Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, Bill Cattigan. So, uh, the motion carries. Great. Alright, so Vicki, would you read the notice, please?
I shall. Alright. In accordance with MGL Chapter forty-eight and the Townsend zoning bylaw, the Townsend Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a remote access virtual public hearing on November sixth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty-five PM on the application of Kevin Smith for a special permits under zoning bylaws Section one forty-five dash eighteen and one forty-five dash sixty-five and a variance seeking relief from Section one forty-five dash fifty-four dot one B one A and Section one forty-five sixty-six. The proposed project involves the construction of three residential duplex buildings consisting of a total of six residential units. The proposed scope of work will include a paved access driveway, drainage systems, utility connections, and their and that, uh, appertenses located at One Depot Street Extension, map fifty block fifty-six lot zero. The property is in the RA three zoning district and the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. Public remote only access is via the following, uh, Zoom link.
Great. Thank you. Um, so, uh, starting with the comments, which is, um, whenever we have an application for a special permit, we have to do, um, mandatory referrals, so we get comments back from various, um, boards in town. Um, so starting with the Board of Health, um, um, Rick Metcalf, um, for the Board of Health, um, says that a septic system must be designed, approved, and installs it is in compliance with compliance with three-ten CMR fifteen dot triple zero in the Townsend Board of Health Regulations. The property is proposed to be served by Town Water. So that's, that's that comment. Um, then there's a planning board comment. Planning Board supports increased housing in this area in particular, signed by Lori Schiffern. And, uh, select board comment. Oh, no Board of Selectmen available, nor seated to provide a comment. Okay, well. That's, alright, and that's all we've got. Is, did anybody else, did Conservation chime in? Or are they, there's nobody there either, right?
Uh, Conservation returned no comment.
Okay. Great. Alright, so, um, let's see, um. I don't know really how to, how to start this, um.
Where, where did I read? I read something about the building inspector. Was that for the, like, why would he have a comment? Would have that been initially getting a permit from him that we, or, um, his opinion and then he sends it to the zoning board?
Yeah, that, that's a determination letter.
Okay.
Okay, it's part of the application.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so if we look in the, the stamped application, we should see a comment from the building inspector?
Uh, the file's huge, so it's like, where to start? There's a lot of documents.
Yes, uh, there is a comment, or there's a determination letter. Where is it?
Uh, here we go. So the building inspector says that your application notes that this property will be located on this, that the property this will be located on is one point four acres in area. Uh, Section one fifty-four fifty-four dash one dash B dot one dot A of the age restricted development section. And the Townsend zoning bylaw states two or more acres of land is criteria for the tract of land required for this type of development. Conclusion, this property does not meet the minimum requirement for areas set within the bylaw.
That, that may be a great place to start, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna just bring this up. I started, um, I went for a site visit, looked at the plans. I'm like, wow, this looks like a great project, and I started to go through things. And that's the one point that I'm gonna need help getting by, so I'm hoping somebody can explain how we get there. So I saw, you know, whenever you get an application, you go, okay, what are they applying for? Special permit or variance or both? And sometimes people check off both boxes just to cover all the bases. In our twenty-plus years of experience, Bill, right, someone like, oh, no, that should be a special permit, not a variance, but they didn't apply for it and we have to start all over again. So with that, I realized, no, they really were asking for a variance and a special permit. So the variance got my attention. And as soon as I came to it being on just basic minimum lot size, it kind of stopped me. And I, I need someone to tell me where we go with all these other folders that get us past that.
Well, you know, actually, the basic minimum lot size in Townsend is either two or three acres. So, uh, this particular lot, uh, is, is, uh, definitely a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
But the, the criteria for the special permit for this particular application or use, the very first thing it says is it's gotta be a two-acre lot. So if you don't have that, what's the criteria that gets you? Are you asking for a variance? If you're asking for a variance, then, then it's the variance criteria.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, I don't believe it needs a variance, and that's why I've cited the case law that we used once before in the case of Jeff Paduzzi. And, um, the, uh, Section Six finding is basically what we need to do, uh, which says that the project, uh, will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on the town. And, uh, it's certainly possible to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use based on this case, um, where the, the, uh, appeals court found that, um, um, in the case of the Section Six finding, the, the zoning board has the latitude to increase the non-conformity, non-conformity without a, uh, a variance being required. And this is for residential use. It's, uh, in commercial use, for instance, when, when, um, when the, uh, big apartment building burned down, uh, we had to use variances to, uh, allow the, the, the rebuild, um, to be, to, to fit on that lot because because of building code changes, the rebuild was a lot larger than the original project.
Yeah, exactly. They had, right, right, right. They had, it wasn't within the same footprint. Okay, so, so you're gonna use the pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming? And you know what? As you say that, like, we don't have a lot of experience with that yet, but I remember Dave Chanel bringing that up at one point, um, sometime, some years ago. Do we actually have a decision where we've used that yet?
Yeah, that would be, um, yes, uh.
Would I, would I be allowed to speak, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Cause I wanna, I wanna understand this.
Yeah, so, so the case came out, um, Darlene, the case that we used in the past is Gale versus zoning board of Gloucester.
Hi, Dave.
How you doing? Um, just let, I mean, I know, how you doing, Stan? Um, Robert doesn't know. I, I, um, I resigned last year, Robert. I was on the zoning board for twenty-nine years. So, so I have a little history. Um, so the, the case came out in two thousand and eleven, and what the proposition was, it was like Bill said, it was only for residential application, but it allowed for the le, the, the, the the leeway of the zoning board to expand a non-conforming structure. So this property definitely, definitely needs a special permit, but it was pre-existing non-conforming, so it's grandfathered back when it was created, right? So what you'll, what he's proposing to do is turn a residential use into a residential use, just more residence. So it's, I believe, based, based on the Gale decision, um, and it is, it, it is in the appeals court, so it's, so it's, it is applicable to the entire state. Um, and John can vouch for me in that as well.
Do you remember how to spell Gale, David?
It's G-A-L-E, um.
I think, I think it got sent out to us this afternoon, uh, Darlene.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, um, I can't remember the, I can't remember the, the, the case number, but it was the, the eight, the, um, appeals court docket was like eleven dash fifteen ninety-six, some foolish thing, if I remember. It goes back, but we've used that in a few cases. It allows, it allows the zoning board some leeway to expand the non-conforming use. Not use, but, but the, uh, the structures. And that's what this is. I mean, you're going from a residence to a residence with just more units.
Okay, so that's, so here's, let me just, cause I'm gonna wrap my head around this.
Oh, yeah. I remember, twenty-nine years.
You're going from a pre-existing non-conforming structure or use? So first you said use, but so you're saying structure?
Yeah, the, the way it happened on that particular case, it was, it was a structure, but it was the residential use. So it's, it's a residential use that's being expanded, but the structures was changing. In the Gale case, it was, it was a very large addition, if I remember. Uh, Bill, did you read the case recently? I don't.
Yeah, I, I did, the, um, the, uh, one party, uh, had this kind of tiny house right next to a bigger house. And, um, that party decided to build a, uh, a much bigger.
Yeah, McMansion, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I call this, the McMansion thing, because basically it allows you to buy a a small house on a pre-existing non-conforming lot and, uh, and build a McMansion as long as the zoning board will agree with that process.
Yeah, so if you look at a lot of buildings on the oceanfront, on lakes, where they take this, like a five thousand square foot lot and they build these McMansions, that's the case that's allowed them to do it. Basically, so.
Right.
Okay, so there, so it wouldn't make a difference, let me, if there was a, say, a half an acre lot that was zoned residential.
Yeah.
Um, never been built on before.
No, well, that, I don't, it wouldn't apply then.
Okay, okay. So because this, cause it wouldn't really be a use, that wasn't a, um, because this had a structure on it, was habitated, it, it was a use, a residential use.
In your situation, we had that, we had that variance request came. I remember Attorney Sheldon from Pepperell represented, um, a, a builder in the town, I'll say, and it was, it was, it was a lot that was, they, they cookie-cuttered about two hundred lots. I ended up with this non-conforming structure, and we like, he said variance, I was like, and I remember I told, I said to him, how do you get past the predecessors with a right argument where they created their own hardship?
Yeah, self-created hardship, that one. I remember that.
Oh, remember that one? He came up to me, says, you're the reason why lawyers shouldn't be on the zoning board. So that, I mean, that doesn't apply. This one here, it's, there's a, there's a structure, there's a residence on it. If it was a blank lot, I, I wouldn't have dialed in tonight to help, to help out. Cause this was my, the case, I just, you know, I get these, I used to get these daily things on cases, and I just sent this out, and it just happened. A year or two later, the issue popped up and we, we used it. And we, we, I think we used it twice, three times maybe?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, well, I, I didn't actually know you were on this call, David. I had my, my computer half screen was over your picture, so you were just the person I thought of, cause I knew you brought this up.
Yeah, not, not a bad, not a bad idea to have my face covered, but that's okay.
You know, we just, I guess the bad part is doing this for so long, we used to do it a different way, and now we're able to look at it a different way, so you gotta be able to, you know, just wrap your head around that.
Darlene, you made a comment about you and Bill doing this for twenty years. I mean, you're trying to cut your age in half, girl.
I'm trying not to say how long, yes.
I got on the board in nineteen ninety-four. You guys were already on it for like five to ten years before.
No, ninety-five is when I started.
Okay, so you and I started the same year then. I started, I, I started in the fall of ninety-five.
So, yeah, thanks for clarifying that, Dave.
You're welcome. But you were only ten at the time.
Alright, alright, alright.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay.
So I didn't want to interrupt, but I know I was, I know I was out of.
No, that was perfect.
Okay.
At this, at this point, I'd like to get a presentation from, from the applicant, uh, as to, you know, what's going on here. We, we have copies of the plans, um, I think. And, uh, is Stan still on the, the call?
I'm here, and, uh.
Okay, great.
Kevin had presented.
Kevin's there.
Either you got, hi, good evening, to you or the plan board before, so I'm gonna let him take the lead on this, and then I'll fill in whatever, whatever you need me to.
Good.
You're muted, Kevin. Hello, Kevin?
Hi.
Yeah, that's better.
Hi, yeah, I, I made it on.
You did.
Uh, good eve, good evening, folks. Um, the proposed project is something that we've talked about. Did I lose you? Oh, am I still there?
We can.
Did I lose you? Okay. Um, we had proposed a number of years back, talked about it, and, uh, we felt that there was a definite need for age-restricted housing, and when the bylaw was originally written, I was under the interpretation that it had to be done around the center of town where there was sidewalks, walking access to all the town services. So what I had done is I had, I had taken a, uh, overlay of the center of town, and I started drawing five hundred-foot circles around it. And this particular piece of property, which we had, had recently purchased at the time, um, it was under the, uh, half acre or so, under the, um, uh, under the area to put it in. And so we tried to buy the property out back. Uh, if we couldn't buy that, we, we, we tried to do everything we could to get it to comply. And we just, we, we, we couldn't. So I had this design, I had, I talked to Stanley, we had this design, uh, uh, drawn up. It looked like it would work, other than it was gonna require some kind of a special permit or, or variance, I guess, if that would have been required. And then it was brought to my attention one time that it was a pre-existing lot, and it, it in fact may work on there with the approval of the zoning board. So we went ahead and got it designed. I think it's a, a nice little project in the center of town that will fit the needs of the people that are aging in place. Um, with, and it'll still satisfy, it'll give the people walking access to all the town services, the town hall, the fire station, the Dunkin' Donuts, the Townsend House, obviously the Townsend Common, the banks, McNabs, and the Family Dollar, and the rail trail. And I felt it was, when I started drawing these circles around, the next available property that I came up with was way out by the police station. And, uh, if you head north towards, uh, Lunenburg, up along the area where they've recently just built one. But there, they have no driveway, no sidewalk access or walking distance to any of the town services. I just felt that it would be prudent to try to, um, see if the, the zoning board would, uh, would, uh, feel good about this and approve this project. And, uh, and it's, uh, three, two-unit buildings with access off from Depot Street Extension. There was no access onto the Depot Street. The Depot Street Extension is a private way. People can come out, there's a, there's an island right there, so they're gonna have good clear visibility if they're in their, in their vehicles to to get out onto the Depot Street, right there by the, at the stop sign, so traffic is always gonna be traveling slow. And, uh, there's approaching the railroad tracks on the stop sign. And it, it, it just felt like it was a, a good thing to do. So I'm asking for whatever relief I, I guess needed. Um, Dave Chanel seems to be, I guess he chimed in. He seems to be, uh, pretty well-versed between him and Bill and Darlene. I, I guess the project and Darlene could probably answer to the, uh, the viability of its location per being in the real estate business. And, uh, I'm just throwing it out there for the board, we're hoping for some approval. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, are there, uh, questions from the board at this point?
Is that a comment?
Go for it.
Um, anyone who knows me knows me that I am not a fan of variances. However, based on, on, on the Dale case, and, and I think looking at each one going down the road, that we don't just allow this to be, anybody who asks for a variance gets a variance and will, will quote the Gale case. Um, other than that, this, this looks like a great project, and, and I would not be opposed to it.
Great, thanks. Anything else?
Are there concerns about adding more traffic to that road? People do speed on it. Um, has there been any feedback from, I don't know, the highway department or police department?
Um, we've got nothing.
Stop sign that people ignore.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you mean the four-way stop there or three-way stop, whatever it is? So people blow through that all the time?
Yeah, yeah, I go, yeah, when I go down to park there, I was always careful crossing.
Yeah.
Can I just answer that as admin for the PB? Um, this will go to site review before the planning board, and those are the things that will be taken up at the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, that's just a few years old, that intersection, so anyone that's lived here for a number of years is probably still getting used to it.
I wonder if the Townsend House has anything to do with that? Okay, um, well.
Bill, can I, can I make a comment? Yeah, just to follow, I just wanna follow what John said. The, the Gale case is a very limited, narrow application of what, where it applies to. It's, it's strictly residential, and as Darlene pointed, it doesn't apply to an open lot. It's, it's, it's an expansion of what's there already. An open lot is no expansion, you just have land. But, so the Gale is very, it's very limited in how it applies, so that's why, that's why I, I've thought, um, I caught wind of this, this coming up, and I said, oh, that's the case that I found in two thousand and eleven. Well, uh, the other thing, I think this is, you know, Bill and I, when I was on the zoning board and Darlene as well, Victoria, this is a project that we all talked about, getting a, getting residential units in downtown area for maybe seniors who, like myself now, unfortunately, rah rah, um, could walk to all the other, all, all the other services in town. It's, it's a perfect application for that property. Um, if you can get past the, the variance, special permit, all this stuff, it, it is a perfect place. I don't know if you, I don't think there's, Kevin, I think you did, you said that you, you went around with a circle and expanded. There's nothing else, there's no other land around that can, that complies. So this is, this is probably your only chance to do that.
My personal opinion, and when they, when they approved this zoning thing, why they made it a minimum of two acres is beyond me.
We talked about.
It should have been way smaller. Yeah, we, actually, I think we made that comment, and they didn't listen to us.
I actually, uh, I actually made a motion at the town meeting to, to reduce it to one acre. And, uh, town council jumped all over me, saying the Attorney General would never support that.
Why would they? They, they build properties this size on, on a quarter acre lot in Boston, or five thousand acre lot, five thousand square feet in Boston all the time? That's stupid.
Frankly, I think somebody should make a note of this. I know this is getting off, off of what our, what we're doing here, but this should be passed along to the planning board, and I think they should revisit this and maybe tweak this bylaw. Cause if anybody else could use it, you know, we, we know there's a need.
Well, as it stands now, you're not gonna be able to, to, um, have any other kind of project like this in downtown area. There's just not enough land.
Yeah.
Unless Kevin was willing to tear down his storage units, but we know that's not gonna happen.
I proposed that, but he didn't like that idea at all.
Yeah, I don't play with it. But anyways, I just, not that I'm a boy, I just wanted to throw my support. I think it's a great, great project.
You know, we've got, we've gotten a couple of commercial to residential conversions, you know, and for McNabs and for, um, uh, who's the folk singer there, uh, Lord, Mickey?
Well, Driving School too, we changed that around a couple of years ago.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, we're starting to get more, uh, residential units downtown, and and I personally think that's key to, to, uh, having the downtown be a, a much nicer place to be than it is at the moment.
Well, if, if you look at the analogy of the, the Driving School, that building, I think it was, um, guy that plays on Eastwood Pig, is, is, was that a Lording guy? Was that Mitch?
Vicki Lorden.
What did, what did he put in there? Four or six units in a, in a lot that was much smaller than what Kevin has now? Same, same, same situation, right?
Right. Yeah, those are, those are rentals, but they're, they're still housing. Alright, um. Do we have any, uh, any comments from the public on this?
Do you want me to repeat myself?
No.
No, we do not. No written comments.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, um, gosh, I don't know where to start, um.
So the SPGA for the age restricted, age restricted development special permit is the planning board, just so you, you just, you don't have to even deal with that. You deal with all the other stuff.
So to, um, to do a Section Six finding, uh, we need a motion that this, this project will not be uh, more deep, well, I don't, I don't, I can't remember the words, but.
Bill, can I, can I make a, can I inject a comment, Bill, just to, before you get going? Since, since it was a variance and a special permit, you might want to, um, get rid of the variance required by a motion that's, that the board finds that it's not necessary, or if it does find, but I think you should dispense with one before you hit the Section Six finding.
Do we need a motion for that, or do we just put in findings of fact?
I think the motion would be more clear, but you could do it in cases of fact.
Yeah. Let's have a motion. Don't everybody speak at once.
Yeah.
Need the right numbers, yeah.
Yeah. I'm biting my tongue, my tongue though, just cause.
Old habit.
Old, thanks, Vic. Just trying to move things along, you know?
Um, alright, Vicki, help fix me here if I don't get this right. Um, all right, Vicki, help fix me here if I don't get this right. I move that. In light of the Gale decision. That we, that one forty-five, no, 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 that's a special permit, that. Where's the variance criteria? It's not variance, that one forty-five dash sixty-five is not necessary for this application. Do you want more than that, Bill? Is that okay?
No, that sounds fine.
Wait a minute, one forty-five sixty-six, not sixty-five.
The variance criteria.
Right, you said one, you said one forty-five sixty-five, which is the special permit.
Sorry. Due to the Gale decision, that this, um. One forty-five dash sixty-six, the variance criteria is not applicable. To this application.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, but to John.
Okay, uh polling members, Darlene.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, Bill Cattigan. Motion carries. So then we could go to the.
Yes, Bill, should we go through the um age restricted development criteria first, then go to the special permit? So do the one forty-five dash fifty-four first?
Why don't we have to go through that?
No, we don't. That's not you, that's.
Oh, that's when you said the planning board, okay.
It's gonna deal with that part of it. Um, we just have to do the section six finding, so we could do. The findings of fact from the special permit first, and then. The, the global section six finding part. Does that, does that make sense?
It certainly does.
Okay.
I did put a old decision in your folders if you wanna use it for reference.
Uh, Comstock or Scott Road?
Uh, Scott Road.
Okay.
All the findings of fact, all the um motions, everything's there if you wanna just.
Billy, are you gonna go through A through G? On that?
Yeah, I think we should. Where, where is that stuff anyway? Is that in the packet?
It is, and it's, it's the folder called uh this uh reference decisions and cases. If you open that up, you'll see uh the decision from twenty eighteen for Scott Road. That was the other one, you had a section.
No, he, no, he's looking for the special permit criteria. So, that is, back up a little bit.
That's also in that decision, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let me look in that decision and see. Oh yeah, here it is, okay, so. Uh, the findings of the fact, so, this uh A through G. The first one being adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed uses. So I think the, based on the, I, I think we, we can refer to the. To the uh age restricted bylaw uh as far as. Um, the basis for uh concluding that the site is adequate in terms of size. And then in terms of the number of units, the planning board is gonna be the final decision on that. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Uh suitability of the site for the proposed use, um. I mean.
Residential use in a residential area.
Right, and it's actually a perfect spot because it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of privacy. Oddly enough.
Actually, technically, is that, what, what is the zoning there? Is it DCD?
Um.
No, it's um.
It's just residential, I think.
What is it?
RA three.
It is RA three.
Yeah, it's R pod.
Oh, okay. But still, it's currently, the lot's been a residential use for years and it will be continued to residential use.
Yep, got it.
Or it's C, impact on traffic flow and safety. Um, because the. Traffic is gonna exit on um Depot Street Extension. Um, it's not gonna involve anybody on uh. On uh Depot Road directly, so I think the, the safety is pretty good and, and um. I've noticed that there isn't a whole lot of traffic down Depot Road Extension, um even with all those uh. Storage units, I mean, there just is not much traffic down there, so.
Yeah.
I have a much more intimate view on storage ru, units than I used to. Um. So um, I, I don't see a big impact there.
I don't either.
Um, so uh item D, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and bestas. Um. Well, I think, you know, that it's obviously gonna be. A little more visual impact uh than a single, uh, single-family house was.
It'll be prettier. And you know.
That house is nothing extra at the moment.
Direct, directly budding, you know, on the other side of Depot and on the other side, I mean, the lots aren't. The lots are rather small and they ha, and they're all written, they're residential use, so I think it fits in just fine.
Uh, section E, adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, um, the um. Sewerage disposal, the um, uh standard SDS, um. And um, source of water is town water and uh. I don't know about drainage, it's, it's pretty flat, so.
Well, they have to comply with the border health anyways on, on septic.
That's not, it doesn't look like an issue to me, that's all I can say. Have adequacy of utilities and other public services. Um, I don't see any issues with that either, I mean. There's, there's, I would think there's plenty of power down there. Um, cause of there used to be all the industrial, you know, the New England Wood Products and uh. The lumberyard was down there, so, um, I'll bet there's pretty good power source. Um, point G, impact on ground and surface water quality and other environmental natural resource considerations. I don't really see a huge impact from the, you know, it's not, the lot coverage is not extreme. Um, I don't see any issues there.
I haven't made the motion on that one, I don't even remember that case.
I do, it's a long time ago.
Okay, i- if you remember the motion, Darlene, go for it.
Um. Hmm. Trying to cheat here, I don't see it. Oh wait, um. Gee, I'll make a, I'll move that the proposed. Project will not have adverse effects, which overbalance its beneficial effects. On either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site.
Second.
Okay, um, polling members, um Darlene.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Um, Robert.
Yes.
Uh, John.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, Bill Cattigan. So the motion carries. Now we need a, a motion for the special permit. My dog is starting to get antsy.
Um. All right, I don't have the, the legal notice in front of me, but I'll go for it. I move that we grant a special permit to Kevin Smith. Under zoning by law one forty-five dash sixty-five.
Nope.
No, sixty-six, sorry.
Okay, wait, um, Darlene, did you, did you look at that draft? Uh, I mean, not the draft, the special permit decision that you have for Scott Road. You can read your, basically read your motions verbatim, and it's probably safer to do that. First, you need to issue your special permit for one forty-five eighteen, pre-existing non-conforming, right? You see how you get it?
Oh yeah, we should, we should do that first, Bill, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. We almost forgot about that. Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, pursuant to one forty-five dash, dash eighteen of the Townsend zoning bylaw, based on. The improvement, um, the proposed, well, the proposed project. Um, will not. In, will not increase the non-conformity and is not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. Does that work?
Well, except that.
I wish I had the bylaw itself in front of me.
I think you just, you don't, you don't want to uh say that it will not in, not increase the non-conformity. Um. In this particular case.
Yeah, um, well, that's why I don't wanna read a motion from another decision.
Yeah, go ahead and, that's fine, I, I can live with that.
Unless, um, Vicki, are you prepared to make a better one than that?
No. I'm trying to figure out, like, based on.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find between all these different folders.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking, um, like, can we say? Um, this is for the non-conforming, right? Based on the benefit to the town? Or a benefit? No, okay.
You gotta use the language in the bylaw.
Okay.
Darlene, if we still had our three-ring binders without, well, all the highlighted. Sections from the bylaws that we used to read all the time, it'd be.
Yeah, I still remember it was so much easier before they re-codified the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah.
No, maybe it's, shall, it's not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use?
That's, that's where we wanna get to.
All right.
Um, so can I just make a motion that this, um. Application. Um, let's see, per one forty-five dash eighteen, that this application will not. Be more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
Sounds good.
Is that okay?
Yeah, and refer, you should reference the findings of fact and the uh section six finding. I believe.
I know, we used to have section six right in front of us. Hmm.
And we, we already accepted the uh special permit criteria.
Right.
And we accepted the uh. Um, second six declaration that it will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um. And so, I, I think you wanna just make that part of, incorporate those things as part of your motion for a special permit.
I hate to say so moved.
So Darlene, though, what is, what is giving you pause on the motion that's in the draft, uh in the Scott Road? Um. I see nothing wrong with that one. I mean, it's, it's motion to grant a special permit to such and such under Townsend's zoning bylaw. One forty-five eighteen and one forty-five sixty-five for a. Proposed project, you know, I don't know how much detail you have to give. To a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And pursuant to the findings of fact, that's your basic, your basic um motion.
Yeah. That's good.
I think there's two of them, aren't there two? I mean, if I go by the Scott decision, there's two, there's. Focusing on one forty-five eighteen.
Yep.
And then there's. Um, and then there's to grant the permit.
Yeah, I think it was. Yeah, belts and suspenders, so what she could do is, you know, combine those two. But, you know, taking them separately makes sense too, because you, it doesn't.
I lost the folder again, Vicki, can you, do you wanna do it?
Let me screen share, but it does have information from another decision, so.
Yeah, I don't want that. Hey, um, everybody else, feel free to jump in if you got better words.
Go ahead, Vicki, you're the clerk, give it a try.
I'll give it a try, alright, so I move that pursuant to section one forty-five dash eighteen of the Townsend zoning bylaw. Um, the proposed project increases the non-conformity. And is not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood.
Sounds good.
All right, okay. Uh, second.
Great, okay, polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
And although yes as well, motion carries. Okay, so um, we have um. Fourteen days to file this decision, but when, when is the planning board hearing?
We have to grant the special permit.
We have to do the special permit part now.
Granted the actual permit yet.
Yeah, let Vicki do the next one too, she did great.
Oh, okay.
She's on to us.
Alright, alright, so, uh, okay, I uh. I make a motion to grant a special permit to um Kevin Smith. Under Townsend zoning bylaw, section one forty-five dash eighteen and one forty-five dash sixty-five for a, uh. Do you wanna say the senior, over eighty, uh, senior?
Age restricted.
Age restricted project, um, to a pre-existing non-conforming. Uh, is that, would that be a structure or a lot?
Property.
Property, I like property. A pre-existing non-conforming property at. I gotta get the address.
Number one, number one Depot Street Extension.
Now there is, a number one Depot Street Extension.
Second.
Uh, and I think pursuant to the findings of fact.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Um, and that it should be built according to plan, be, it built according to plan?
No, because it's gotta go through site plan.
Yeah, planning board may, makes me, okay.
Right.
Well, you could say that um, the plan, the, the plans have been submitted to us, but we're.
That's already in the findings of fact, though, so.
Okay.
All right, second.
All right, polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
And although yes as well, uh, the motion carries, Bill Cattigan. Um. Okay. So that's it. So, the question I had was, um, when is the planning board picking this up? Can we get a decision filed before then?
Uh, so the, this has been continued to the eighteenth of November for the planning board. Um, I can. Get the decision filed with the town clerk if I get someone to sign tomorrow, you know, I can get, I've got it. Right in front of me, so, yeah.
I'm in town tomorrow.
Want to assign a town, a signee, or uh approve a signee by vote?
I'm in town tomorrow, I'm fine.
You're, you're gonna do it, John?
I can, I certainly can do it.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize John to sign the decision for the board?
Sure, I move to give John Page the authority to sign the decision on the behalf of the zoning board members.
Give me a second. Okay, polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
Just thinking.
I said yes.
Oh, you did, oh, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry, I'm. Oh, you did? Oh, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry, I'm getting old. Uh, Vicky?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So John's authorized to sign the decision.
Beth, what, Beth, what time are you in the office tomorrow?
Uh, tomorrow, I will probably have this done by noon. Give me till noon if that's good.
I can do that.
All right, great.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, um, for some reason, the application, um, it's solely in my name and it, it, it should include in the application and decision, I don't know why, uh, Ken Tully as well, his name is on the plans. Um, I don't, I don't know why it, uh, wasn't, uh, in there. Um, didn't know if your secretary could include that in the decision. So it would, it would be Kevin Smith and Ken Tully.
Yeah, that sounds like, it sounds like a typo correction to me.
Yeah, that's probably all it is.
Anybody else have anything to say about it?
I don't have a problem with it if, if it's.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, um, I guess that's it, so, um, uh, what else, is, do we have anything else at this point, Beth?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
So we let everybody know that we're done with the hearing and they can go on with their evening if they choose. I mean, we'd love to have you, you know, stay with us, but.
Oh wait, was there anything in, um, clerk in the file there under correspondence you need to look at? Yes, yes, one thing. Um, where is it? I think I just, I had just posted the agenda for the twenty-first. So that's in your correspondence file. For some reason, I can't pull it up right now, hold on. All right, correspondence has, okay, so yeah, in your correspondence is your, um, the appointment letter for Robert just so loud, and the, um, agenda's been posted for the twenty-first. I did, um, make that a hybrid meeting. It doesn't mean you have to come into town hall, but it, uh, it's an option, so I will be there.
Cool.
All right.
And that's the one on the Speedway gas station, right?
Uh, three twenty-four Main Street, yes.
Yeah, cool.
Why did you make it a hybrid? What, what made you have, make that decision? I was curious.
Uh, a Chair Cattigan had mentioned it the other day when he came in. He said, um, why don't you give the applicant the option? So that's what's going on there.
Oh, okay.
It's flexible.
Yeah, it's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep those cards and letters coming.
Alright, so, um, I move to close the meeting.
Sir, there's no clerks announcements of correspondence? You just says, there's nothing else? We did the minutes.
Just left, yeah, just those two minutes are done, so.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Nobody's seconded yet.
We need the second.
Second.
Oh, we have a second. Darlene, polling the members.
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Thanks a lot, guys.